Thank you so much. It's such a pleasure to be here. And I'm so sorry I was late. I went to the other, I'm so embarrassed by this, but I went to the other 103 Montgomery. When I'm a little geographically challenged. So thank goodness Jackie Prager from my office isn't and guided me back here. So I apologize. Um, so my name is Hillary Ronan. I am the supervisor of District Nine. District Nine includes the Mission, Bernal Heights, and Portela neighborhoods of San Francisco. And because I am the District Nine supervisor, I have been deeply involved in homeless policy, mental health policy, drug addiction policy in San Francisco for the past, you know, eight years, pretty much. I'm on my last term in office. I have seven months left. I was a legislative aide for my predecessor, David Campos. So I've been in the District Nine office for a very, very long time. But when I started as a supervisor of District Nine almost eight years ago, it was right after Santa Clara, although SF was involved, hosted the Super Bowl. And Mayor Lee at the time had to create a whole Super Bowl party scene on the Embarcadero. And so they moved all of the people that were unhoused on the Embarcadero, and they all came to the Mission. And so when I started in office, there were, and I know because we, a legislative aide of mine, plus a DPW worker, went and counted the tents every week. There were 280 tents in the Mission district from Division to Sister Chavez, Petraero to Valencia. So in that tiny area, right in front of people's homes and businesses, it was the worst, the worst it's ever been since I've been supervisor. So I had no choice but to deal with that right off the bat. It happened pretty quickly. I mean, there'd always been homelessness in the Mission. But this level, we had not seen anything like it. So, um, you know, if you don't have a place for people to go, you can't solve street homelessness, right? Or street, people sleeping on the streets. And all of our shelters were, you know, filled up at the time. And so I teamed up with Mayor Lee, and I have to give it to Mayor Lee at the time, because when I ran for office, this was right after I ran for office. And I was not his candidate. My main opponent was his candidate. But I kind of ran against Mayor Lee and his policies. And even though I ran against him and his policies and criticized him for, you know, a year on the campaign trail, he immediately partnered with me. And I just, I just have to say that because there is hope for politics. I had an incredible experience with him at the time. And I, you know, we both were like, we're in a different phase. We're mature, we're adults, and we have a problem that we need to fix. Let's work together to do it. And we did it. What we did at the time, we opened up a navigation center. At the time, I had a partner, I had negotiated a deal with Lennar Corporation, who wanted to build market rate housing on a site. And we got a community benefits deal with them. And then, but they were, they needed about, you know, nine months to, or to a year to get their entitlements. So they gave us the space. It was McMillan Electric, 1515 South NS, to open up a navigation center. So this is again, private partner, private public partnerships, old opponents in politics getting along. It was like another San Francisco back then. And so we, um, we opened up the navigation center. And then what we did with outreach workers is we went around the navigation center, kind of in a concentric circle. And we told people way in advance. And we have this brand new navigation center. You can bring your partners, your pets, your belongings. You could stay there indefinitely until we can find you a way out of homelessness. And if you don't, you know, we really want you to accept this placement. We're really going to help you. But if you don't accept it, you can no longer sleep on the streets of the Mission. And then we enforced that with the help of the local police captain at the time. And it worked. We got from 260 tents all the way down to 30 tents. And we maintained that, and I can talk about those 30 tents, but we maintained that for quite a long time. It went up and down from like 30 to 60, but we never really got above 60 tents, which between, compared to 260 was remarkable change. And then, um, there was a policy change on the part of HSH at the time. And they decided they were no longer going to do this sort of neighborhood-based, really, really closely, you know, held process where we held a neighborhood, we got people inside, we helped them. And instead, just send their teams to chase 311 calls across the city. And they put a limit on the number of amount of time people could stay in shelter, even if they didn't have a path out of homelessness. That not only ruined our model, but then the pandemic hit. And so when the pandemic hit, there was a shelter in place, you know, order. And so people were told to sleep in tents on city streets. And so we lost, you know, we lost a lot of ground. And I've kind of been struggling ever since. So this is, I, it's a very interesting story. We come out of the pandemic and I'm like, once again, I know it works. You have to build a place for people to go. And then you have to work with them to get there. And then you have to say, now you're no longer allowed to sleep here, but you have to give a real meaningful alternative. And so I really fought to get money to open up this tiny home. South NS had closed down. That's a long story that I'm not going to get into. But that closed down. So we had to open up a new place. So I got money in the city, in the city budget to open up the second tiny cabin spot. I had visited the first one at 33 Goff. It is by far the best temporary type shelter I have ever seen and continue to believe that. Also for people who are sleeping on the streets, it's the number one, it's the one kind of shelter they will almost certainly accept. You know, instead of congregate shelters that really, you know, women don't feel safe in, and many men don't either. LGBTQ community doesn't feel safe. And it's just, it's not ideal. So the problem was that when we had closed down 1515 South NS, there's a lot of tents that sparked up around it. And they had turned it from a navigation center into a safe sleep site so people can sleep in tents on the property. Because Lennar pulled out, they never built the project. That's another story. The city, the city bought the site. We're now going to build 100% affordable housing on it, which is great. But it's, that process hasn't started yet. And the city wouldn't maintain the conditions around the site. So I kept getting complaint, you know, when I opened 1515 South NS navigation centers, there was a lot of opposition. And I promised the neighbors, this is going to make the neighborhood better. You know, we can't, I can't just push people into another neighborhood. That doesn't solve any problems. We have to build a place for them to go. And if we build a place for them to go, then we can bring them inside. But they never kept, the city never was able to keep the promise long-term to keep the areas in front, you know, kind of pristine. And I went to Matt Dorsey's inauguration, you know, swearing in, and walked by the Embarcadero navigation center that I had seen for the first time ever. And it was gorgeous. There was nothing out in front. Nobody waiting, no trash. It looked like it could even be like a hotel or something, like a fun place for people to stay. And I got so angry, I immediately called the Department of Homelessness and Supportive Housing. I said, okay, so for the Embarcadero, you can keep the conditions in front of the center perfect, but the Mission, you can't handle the situation. Like, I am done with this, you know, treatment of richer neighborhoods in a better way than you're treating the Mission. And so I said, I'm not going to support these cabins until you fix it. Like, I just, I refuse. So even though I fought for the money and got the money for the cabins, I actually put the project on pause because I wanted the different departments of the city to see that yes, I am, you know, people would say very far on the left of the political spectrum. Yes, I want to help people that are unhoused and mentally ill and addicted get better. And I don't think throwing them in jail is the answer. I also don't think you can just move people around and that that's a responsible leadership thing to do. So me stopping or pausing a tiny cabins project was a big deal. Because, you know, I'm the sucker. I'm like, bring it to my neighborhood. You know, we want working class feeling and culture and middle-class atmosphere in the Mission. That's what this neighborhood's always, always been. That doesn't mean we want tents on the sidewalk and people shooting up and crime and chaos on the streets. We want affordable housing. We want services for people. But you have to be able to maintain the street conditions if you're going to have that in a neighborhood. Most other neighborhoods won't even accept those things. I always stand the opposite of a NIMBY, but not necessarily a YIMBY. Because YIMBs just want market rate, market rate, market rate. What we want is more affordable, affordable. But we want actual housing. We want actual services for the poor. But we, but we don't want the chaotic street conditions. This is a family neighborhood and we don't want it. So finally, after a lot of negotiations, after getting some conditions on how we're going to get many more resources in the Mission, after having worked with the mayor's office for a long time to fix the vending of illegal goods on Mission Street, at least during the day, you know, and seeing the city invest more resources in the Mission in a serious way, we put the tiny homes project back on the table and it's now open. And we have now moved people off the street into that. Some of the, some of the most people that would never accept any services have accepted these services and have been moved into the tiny cabins. I will say, there's been a couple of problems with the acuity level of some of the people coming off the street and the ability of Five Keys, which is the nonprofit supporting it, to handle that level of mental illness or that level of addiction. And there's a ton I could say about all of that. And I'd rather answer your questions than get into more information that you may or may not want. But before I hand it over to you for questions, I want to mention that in the middle of this all happening, there has been a crisis forming in San Francisco. And that's why I asked Mark from Raphael House to join me today. And thank you for doing that. And that's family homelessness. A year ago, we had no waitlist for family emergency shelter at all. No waitlist, zero waitlist. You could immediately get into an emergency shelter if you were a family in San Francisco. Today, we have over 300 people on our family shelter, emergency shelter waitlist. And we have over 900 people waiting for, you know, an affordable housing situation. So those 900 people are either in SROs, doubled up, you know, tripled up and sleeping on the floor, or in shelters, emergency shelters. So for the first time since I can remember, there are kids sleeping on the streets of San Francisco. And there's kids, not just one or two. I talked to and I meet with all the different departments that are on the streets every day. And everyone will report finding kids for the first time. A lot of this issue is refugees coming from Central and now South America to be safe here, and they're coming to San Francisco. But some of it is just all of our capacity in the family shelter system is, you know, at its peak. So I have been working with the mayor on this with urgency. We did make a major announcement yesterday, which will, which will help the situation a lot, but will not take care of the numbers that are out there. We, you know, took the 17 million that had accrued in interest on the Prop C money in the city. Prop C, I don't know if you know, is the tax on commercial rents. And that helps fund homeless services in the city. And so with that 17 million dollars, we are able to create 80 new, so we already had some in the works, but 80 additional emergency shelter or hotel vouchers. So we use hotels now, you know, like the Motel Six type motels. And we, you know, try to master lease the buildings to get families in there. We also have 85 new spaces in our Rapid Rehousing Program, which is where if a family, you know, members of the family have a job at all, we ask them to pay 30% of their income towards market rate housing. And then the city subsidizes the rest over, up to now, it used to be up to two years, now it's up to five years, while giving workforce counseling, you know, childcare, educational help, you know, making a plan with the families to exit that, you know, any subsidies or needs from the city. So I just wanted to throw out there that our needs in the family shelter area are huge at the moment. They're always huge with single adults, and I can talk all about that. But if there is anybody here who's interested or able to support financially, we have a ton of ways to support in this area. One is Raphael House. I don't know if you mentioned this, Mark. But they have an entire floor that can't be used right now because of a roof that needs repair. That is an easy way to get 10 rooms in perhaps the most successful emergency shelter in the city because their families usually are in the shelter for six months and then, and then move to, you know, actual housing. And because they wrap around the families, you know, two years later, they just have enormous success. And so we're really trying to get someone to help out Raphael House so we can get nine more rooms open in their incredible program. And then we're really, you know, we have negotiated with certain hotels where we could buy them if we had the capital funding to buy those hotels. We would then need the operating funds. But there are ways to try to find that in our, in our city budget. Or just more slots in the, you know, the almost Section 8, like local Section 8 program we have for families, or in this emergency hotel vouchers. So please come and talk to me afterwards if this is of interest to you at all. We, the fact that kids are sleeping on the street as a mother kills me every single day of my life. So it's really where we're, we're really focused as an office right now. But having said that, I can answer any of your questions. I've been immersed in all of this for the past eight years and happy to do so.
Thank you so much, Hillary. Very, very grateful to have you here and the work that you're doing. Thank you. So it's my understanding that you met Paul at Mission Cabins. Can you talk a little bit about that project? How many rooms it has? What kind of services are offered? And tell us a little bit about that.
Sure, absolutely. So that's the tiny cabins. It's...
So that was the project that you put on hold? And then you just recently opened within a month or so?
That's right. That's right. So I believe there are 65 cabins with the ability to house 68 people. A couple of them would accommodate a couple, if there was a couple together. The services that are provided there, well, first of all, each of the cabins has electricity, has a heater, has a place to plug in your phone. There are communal kitchen areas, communal showers, and bathrooms. They're all like those, you know, kind of porta-potties, but the nicer ones, the showers and all of those things. They do offer two meals a day, I believe. And, you know, the services either onsite or offsite are available, that are available for most of these types of programs. So there's counseling, you know, around workforce and around money management and around, you know, looking for a permanent housing situation, problem solving, figuring out what is the root cause of your situation. Let's try to fix that. There are, you know, social workers that are already following, that many of the people living in the tiny homes are already their clients. So they follow them in and are even more robust, the services that they're giving the clients when they move into the tiny homes, because they want it to be successful. And as I said, the addiction level and mental health acuity level is very high on the streets for many, many people. And so following, the social worker following them inside the tiny cabins and even being more present becomes really, really important during that, that transition period. And, you know, there's medical services, et cetera. I think, I think that about covers. Did I miss anything, Jackie? No? Okay.
And from that experience of, you know, putting together this community, what is your number one learning?
I'm still trying to figure, I mean, for me in the Mission, and I am just, you know, I'm so specific to the Mission because that's where all the street conditions really exist in my, in my neighborhood, or in my district, sorry. Bernal Heights, pretty great street conditions. Portela, pretty great street condition. The Mission is a mess most of the time. And so I'm constantly trying to fix the situation there. And, you know, this is right at 16th Street Bart. This is right behind 16th Street Bart. So this is prime, difficult area and has been for decades. And there are a lot of SROs right there. And so people, there's no place to hang out in SROs. And you're in your tiny little, often really gross room for a really long time. So you hang out on the street in order to be like, to breathe fresh air. You know, it's a normal thing. But it means there's a lot of poor people hanging out on the streets a lot. And the Mission is fascinating because you have oftentimes like millionaires living next to undocumented immigrants, 10 families to a, to a building, right? And it's that proximity of such wealth inequality that is unique, I think, in San Francisco in terms of a neighborhood. And it creates a ton of conflict. And so, you know, I, I won't say about this. What I've learned in general is that there, it's not for lack of effort that we're not fixing street conditions. Like, we think about it and we work on it every single day. The problem is, I see it, and the reason I'm talking about street conditions when you're asking me about tiny cabins, yes, tiny cabins is one of the fix to street conditions. But if, if you force a homeless service, you know, agency in the middle of a neighborhood, you're always going to get pushback, no matter where it is. You know, whether it's in the Tenderloin or it's in Pacific Heights. You are going to get people that say, I care about the homeless people, just not right here. This is not the right place. And they will tell you a million, everyone will be like, it's right across from the hospital, or it's right near a childcare center. Or it's, you know, there's always an excuse about why the specific place is not adequate. And I feel like in order to change that, we have to start proving that if you accept these services into a neighborhood, that they improve street conditions. And if you can't prove that, we're never going to convince people. I'm a supervisor that will take on the neighbors that are opposing it. And I work with them very closely. I'm not disrespectful in any way. In fact, we meet with them, you know, weekly or monthly, depending on how close we are to problem solve. But I don't see how we fix the problem unless we bring these services in. And so I do it. But I have had a really hard time consistently and permanently fixing the street conditions around it. And I can get into all those details, but I'll stop there to hear more questions. And, and yeah, ask me if you want to know more about that.
So my question's not exactly related to that, but I was just curious. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just basing this off of some reporting that was in The Chronicle. What would you say explains like the inflated price tag for this project versus, relative to other projects in, you know, the Bay Area? And what do you think could be done, you know, within various departments, within City Hall, during the procurement process, whatever, to, you know, give us more bang for our buck so we can, you know, have more services like this at much more, you know, price effective, you know, level? So, thank you.
Absolutely. It's a hard one. The number one, I mean, there are several reasons why the price tag is so high. One of the reasons is because when we have a city project, we use union labor and city workers. And that is more expensive than if we didn't use union labor. And I, you know, for one and for that, I think, you know, I mean, it's so hard to survive in the city. And if we're not paying living wage, union wages and jobs, then we're going to have more people, you know, that are, that are either leaving the city or, you know, that become homeless because it's, it happens all the time. So I think that that's a good way to make sort of double use of city money. The other main reason is that these services are just incredibly expensive. They're, you know, we offer two meals a day. We offer robust social work. We could, we could strip away all those services, but we're not going to be as successful as, you know, really getting people out of homelessness. And that's how much it costs. I mean, I have examined these budgets through and through saying, this is absurd. We have to get these costs down. And there, there's, there's, it's really hard to do it unless we contract out, so we don't build it as a city. And those contractors don't use union labor and bring in module and all these things that, that we don't do as a city. So it's, that is a policy choice that, that we have to make. And, you know, I sometimes come down on, you know, down on it different depending on the project, you know, depending on the level of urgency. I mean, I do think we need to suspend some of our rules when there are children sleeping on the street, you know? There are moments when we need to be efficient and fast over bureaucracy. I also think we have too much bureaucracy. We've been cutting a lot of it out, thank goodness, finally. I hate bureaucracy for bureaucracy's sake, but sometimes the bureaucracy is there to serve another social good that is worth serving. It's a balancing act.
My question is, my name is Ellen. I am in San Francisco for 38 years. And thank you for being my district supervisor. I got two questions. Number one, we have more than 1 million homeless in the entire state right now. I'm not talking about state, the 50 states. But California accountable for 50%. And the homeless business controllers using San Francisco to draw our public money for $8,000 a month, a homeless. And you are a supervisor. And you know, no kids allow on the street. So you keep talking about children on the street. That's un-reality. Because I'm a social worker myself. No kids allow homeless on the street because of child protective services. So my two questions to you. Number one, a couple days ago, we had about 1,400 missing people in San Francisco. Many of them homeless people. We suspect human trafficking and organ harvesting. So that's my number one question. Number two, a couple weeks, a couple days ago, we have a lot of news about nonprofit people. They profited, pocketed the money from the homeless and never done a thing about it. Supervisor Ronan, you are a lawyer and you are district supervisor. I know that you're going to term out in January, not next year. But this is the criteria. We don't have homeless crisis. It is the politician created the situation for the globalist. We have a team of five people in here doing homeless ministry on the street.
Yeah, I mean, look, I'm the first to say we have many problems in the city. I mean, I personally think the city right now is in, it's the way the city is running itself is in one of the worst, is the worst state I've ever seen in the 15 years I've been in the District Nine office. So there's plenty of criticism to go around and things that need to change. I do not believe that the politicians in place now are the main reason why we're dealing with the level of homelessness that we're dealing with. The reason we're dealing with the level of homelessness we're dealing with is, is simple. We, we have a political system and a tax system at the federal level that where billionaires pay less tax than you and I, like normal, everyday people, than schoolteachers and nurses. We're funding billions of dollars in two wars in foreign countries while we have a million homeless people that don't even have food or housing, and there's children sleeping in the streets. I mean, that's the cause of homelessness. And it's poverty. It's a broken system, you know, which I believe really, really starts at the federal level. And I, I think locally that, you know, we're not perfect, but we are building a lot of affordable housing. We are building a lot of services. We have pretty much very little to no uninsured people for healthcare. I mean, I, you know, I have a lot to criticize San Francisco for, but I also have a lot to compliment us for. And it's just, we cannot handle the numbers. The numbers are just overwhelming. And no city in this country can fix it. And what's happening in San Francisco, it's happening everywhere. I'm from Los Angeles. I'm from West LA. I go home to visit my mom where I grew up. I cannot believe... I cannot believe the street conditions around my old house. Like, I, I mean, the, the houses, I mean, we live in a little rent-controlled apartment, but my, the houses there sell for, you know, $2 million, and there's tent encampments around there. So this is happening everywhere. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you. Her, and then you.
Hi, my name is Nikita, I so appreciate your conversation today, and I run one of the DAOs here, the Recovery DAO, and one of the things that, and this is controversial, so I'm gonna tread very lightly, but, that I've been finding and hearing is that, one of the main issues we're having is that we've become almost a destination site for drug use, for drug selling. And, and the question I have very much so goes along with the article that I think is part of that article, which is, The Chronicle was reporting that the 300 families that we have on our waiting list have actually been brought in from Texas, that they've been bused in from Texas. And if that's true, or if that's not true, it doesn't, it doesn't really, but I, I'm really wanting to know about like the financial culpability of this city, when people are coming in from external spaces, and how do we manage that with federal money? Like, just so that I have some idea of how we can also do that for the recovery services.
Absolutely, I, I really, I don't know the answer to this, right? I, I, I think about it a lot. I do think some of that happens, for sure, there's no doubt about it. We provide better services, and I think that, that that gets, you know, out there, and people come, we also have better weather, and in California, you know, like, there's many aspects that have, and the numbers always change, and, you know, I, I will tell you that a large, if not majority, of the homeless, people experiencing homelessness in San Francisco were living in, in San Francisco prior to becoming homeless. But that doesn't mean that people don't come here for that, that, that is real. And so I'm like, so what is the answer? Do we stop providing really good services because, you know, we don't want those extra people to come here? And what happens to those people? It's like, it's like, you know, what my, many of my colleagues just push people out of their neighborhoods, they don't care where they go in San Francisco, I won't do that, because that's not responsible, and that's not solving any problems. It's the same thing if you look at it, you know, statewide, what, statewide, nationally. What I would say about that is, I'm, I sit on the Bay Area Housing, what is it called? BAFA, the Bay Area Finance, Housing Finance, this agency, it's, it's a regional body of the nine Bay Area counties. It was created by David Chu when he was an Assembly member, and the idea is to start coordinating our, our nine Bay Area counties, to start building affordable housing together and dealing with homelessness together, because we're, we're not just these, you know, separate counties, it's all interconnected, and people go back and forth. And we're putting a regional bond on the November ballot, hopefully, please, hopefully, it'll be a $20 billion regional bond, and if it passes, which is to me the most important thing on the ballot right now, if it passes, we will not only have $20 billion of new money coming in to build affordable housing, which will, will build tens of thousands of affordable units all over, but 20% of those funds will be controlled by BAFA, this regional agency, and they're gonna, in essence, create a public bank with it, where that money, they will, they will act as a bank for counties and for nonprofit housing developers, they will lend money, charge fees and interest, and those fees and interests will then go back into funding more projects. So it's the first time that we're, we're using an influx of money to create something that with, is self-sustaining, and will create a funding source for affordable housing that isn't reliant upon the voters and the taxpayers. I am so excited about that, because nothing like it exists, really. We have tax credits at the federal level, but those are becoming increasingly difficult to get, and every cent is spoken for in the Bay Area for the foreseeable future when it comes to affordable housing money. So we don't have any, if this doesn't pass, we don't have any other, there is no backup, there is no other money, so please, take nothing else away from today, please vote for the Regional Housing Bond on the November ballot.
Yeah, hi, my, my son goes to school at 21st Mission, and so we're in the area often, every day. My question is regards to human trafficking that's happening in the area, ever since Prop. 357 passed, Cap Street was closed down, but there still is lots of street prostitution that's happening in the area. And so I'm just curious about the effort that's happening to address that, as well as the Mexican cartels that are in that area pushing drugs, as well as prostitution.
Well, look, let me talk about prostitution for a minute. So, Cap and 21st, that area, Shotwell, Cap, there has been street-level prostitution there for about 50 to 100 years. I mean, it's just, how did that get started? I have no idea, but it has been a consistent situation. What changed recently, I'd say about a year ago, is Cap Street had become like the Las Vegas Strip. It was insane. There were probably hundreds of, of mostly women, you know, half naked, the traffic was bumper to bumper, the pimps were walking the streets like in fur coats, I mean, it looked like out of a movie. And we put barricades up on Cap Street, that's, like, when I say I'm constantly working on fixing street conditions in the mission, that's pretty much what I do most of my time. And we, you know, we gotta, I, I, you know, I beg the police to have a more constant presence, you know, we have a, a police staffing crisis. Trying to get the police to do anything in the city is not easy. I had to bring out at, you know, 1 o'clock in the morning, the deputy chief to walk the street with me until I got the resources I was asking for from the department. Once he saw it, he was like, "Okay, this is different, I'm sending you, you know, all these other, other police from different agencies." And so we pretty much shut that down on Cap Street, which is fantastic news, it was insane. We, there's very little prostitution on Cap Street now, there is a little prostitution happening on Shotwell, one street over, we can't cut, shut down that street because of safety purposes, you can't have to shut down barricaded streets for fires, safety concerns. In terms of trafficking, it's really, I mean, I'm constantly asking the DA and the Police Department, what, you know, sort of operations do you have going on to, to get at these trafficking, you know, rings? A lot of them are, are from Oakland, they're, a lot of the, the girls come in from Oakland. And, you know, they say, you know, "We've got it, but we can't get enough evidence," I mean, there's like a million excuses. So I, you know, I don't know what, what more to say about that. What I've spent my time doing, because I don't have a ton of control over, you know, how the police or the DA do their investigations, is I have been trying to create more housing, specifically for women who have been sexually assaulted or trafficked. So we work very closely with Community Forward, they run a drop-in shelter for women only, women and, you know, self-identified women only, in the mission, right on Mission Street. And we were able to get $30 million in the last bond for them to open up, hopefully try to obtain a building that's like in foreclosure, where they would triple the size of their drop-in shelter, which is, you know, overnight. The second floor of the building would be all long-term transitional housing for women, and then the third floor would be drop training center. So the, the key to getting women safe out of trafficking, there, a lot of them are homeless or living, or being forced to live with, with their pimp, and a lot of them don't have alternative job skills, you know, they, they're often trafficked so young that they don't even finish high school. So we, the, the service level has to be a lot higher. So we, I am actively trying to get, help Community Forward get this building so that they can create this program, because right now, just like the families, we have safe house, they have about nine spaces in their safe house, and that's all we have, we don't, if we can't get housing and jobs for these women, they're too afraid to risk leaving their pimp. And so I'm trying to work on the service side, at the same time that I'm trying to tell the DA and the police chief, "Can you do your job and go after these people?" But it's not an easy problem to fix. I also think that if we want to really fix the street problem, then we also, you know, should probably either, you know, decriminalize or legalize prostitution, and then we can regulate it and get it in more appropriate areas, because in the middle of a family's, family neighborhood is just, should not be there.
So I loved what you were saying, up until about five minutes ago. I really love what you're doing in the mission, but soon as you blamed your problem in San Francisco's sex trafficking on Oakland, that's where I have a big issue. I work for a nonprofit organization called Love Never Fails, we have plenty of housing that you guys could utilize, you don't have to keep your people in San Francisco to get help, because it's not healthy for them to stay in San Francisco.
Let me just stop you for one second. I never blamed our prostitution problems on Oakland.
I heard you say the people are coming from Oakland, when San Francisco has a higher amount than Oakland does, they're number two.
When I talk to the police, to the advocates, and to the DA, what they tell me is that a majority of the women who are engaged in sex work on Cap Street and, and Shotwell are coming in from Oakland. I don't know that personally, I haven't gone out and talked to them and asked them, but that's what our public officials tell us, so.
Okay, not gonna argue with you. Yeah, yeah, I get it, Oakland's ground zero for, yeah, I get it. I'm not sure about that, but I do know that San Francisco is higher on the list than Oakland is in sex trafficking.
But I'm not, I, it's like, that's.
But, but getting off of that.
Your whole setup is so weird, I'm not blaming Oakland for anything, and Oakland shouldn't blame Palo Alto, and Palo Alto shouldn't blame San Francisco. There is a problem, which there's an exploitation happening of women.
So why would you want to make a district where it would just be, everybody looks the other way? Why would you want a district like that?
So I'm saying.
When we do have housing available to help people.
Your problem, your problem isn't with me saying that the women are coming from Oakland, your problem is me saying we should decriminalize.
No, yeah, because if you did, they've already done that, and that's why everything has gone up so much. They have made it so that it has, they can't even go.
Sex work is a crime in California, I don't know what you mean.
But it's not really, well, can I go ahead?
Yes, please, please, someone else, maybe Ted could speak to this better than me.
I'm gonna actually move from this, and ask something else. As a lawyer, what is stopping you from taking a hard route, as in finding homeless so that you say they have to be forcibly moved out of their situation? Amsterdam did it, it worked pretty well for them. What, what is stopping us from taking a hard line, but also still have mercy procedures in place so that they can get help, you know?
Well, we are doing that right now, I mean, we, we couldn't for a little while because we were under an injunction, but that injunction has been clarified, that as long as we're doing what I said, so, first of all, I used to do that way back in the day, that's why I started with 1515 South San Luis, and it worked. So I, I used to have a whole program doing just that, being so humane, I mean, we gave warnings, we talked to people, and we, you know, it really was a good option, we were giving them, you know? And so if they chose not to take it, we said, "You cannot camp here," and the police really did that. After they, so during the pandemic, we did not do that because it was safe, the safest place for people unhoused to be was in a tent, so we, we let them be there. After COVID crisis, we were under a court injunction to not move anybody from the streets unless we had housing for everyone, that's how the city attorney interpreted it. We appealed that and asked for clarification, and we got what we wanted and needed, which is exactly what we were doing in the mission and what you're suggesting. After humane, offering an alternative place, if that person chooses not to take it, then you can move them. We are doing that every day in San Francisco. The problem is if, they're just moving to another street corner, right? So it's not like, we don't solve anything when we do that, but we are doing that every day, and it, at least it provides a little relief for that one part of the neighborhood. But it's, it's a cat and mouse, I hate to say it, it, it happens crazy. But what we, I'm sorry, I think I forgot the last part of your question.
The second half was not, not so much the moving them around, but once you put them in a position where you have, they get a fine or something like that, they can actually, you can actually put a, I forget the terminology here, forgive me, put them into a program that, it wouldn't be moving them around, but you see my, my point.
I see what you're saying, so when they're refusing services, can you force them into services? The only way you can do that is if they're 5150, and the, so if they're conserved. And we have improved the laws a little bit around conservatorship, it's extremely hard to conserve someone, they have to be, they cannot be, they have to not be able to articulate how to care for themselves. And so many people can say, "I'll go to Glide for food, and I have my tent here, and I can take care of myself." And, and that like prohibits, only police, firefighters, and doctors can conserve, but that prohibits them from conserving people. So we're limited, and, and, and it's, it's really frustrating, because someone is so clearly sick, they're, like, if they don't get help or are not forced to receive services, they're gonna die on the street, they are causing havoc for the people around them, I mean, but legally, we are hamstrung on what we're, we're able to do. And it's one of the most frustrating things to me when trying to improve conditions around tiny homes, because we have a few people that are so sick, they will not, they refuse everything, and as much as we try to get them conserved, they, they won't, they say they can't.
Okay, we have about two minutes left, so we'll take one last question.
My question is, you mentioned you believe legalizing prostitution would be a good policy change towards helping victims of human trafficking, I think that's what you said?
I mean, it's more complicated than that, but sure, ask your question, I'll comment on it.
Well, okay, my question to you is, are you getting input from the survivors of human trafficking in policy?
Yes.
And I would strongly encourage you to do that, because it's a very complicated thing.
It is.
I, I'm, I'm on the board of Love Never Fails, and they're doing, I'm not sure if you're aware of them, they're doing.
I do, I am aware.
They're doing amazing work, Vanessa Russell's my dear friend, she's excellent, and she can be a great resource and advisor into the policies. But, yeah, it's very, very complicated, and our general position is that is a negative policy, to legalize prostitution. The policies need to dramatically change, we see generally the prostitute, the overlap with human trafficking is so full, it's hard to divide the line, they should be treated as victims, the pimp, the laws against the pimps should be highly, highly strengthened, they shouldn't be called pimps, they should be called traffickers, and we should start enforcing laws against the Johns who are using that service. That's our general policy position. I'm saying as Love Never Fails.
Sure. You know, I, we could, this is, I, I could not agree with you more, this is such a complicated issue, and it really changes based on the class level of the woman, I mean, there are genuinely sex workers who aren't trafficked, and there are many, okay, we disagree on that point, but I, I've talked to many sex workers that say that it's their choice in places like Nevada where it is legalized, and they, they, this is their choice, they're in college, and they do this to make money and pay their way, I mean, it's, but it's often a class issue, those women tend to be white, they tend to be in college, and it's, it is different, so I, I grant you all that, like, it would be really complicated. The reason I'm not gonna pursue that at all, because I, I did try to start this discussion in San Francisco, is because the community itself is so divided. There are people like Love, like your organization, that believes there is no real voluntary sex work that happens, that every woman is trafficked. Right. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree with that. I agree with that. Yeah. And, and so we were talking to all, like the whole spectrum of, of people engaged in sex work. And they disagree so much with each other that we were like, we're not going to get into this because if they don't agree with each other, then like, there's no way I can step into this. So I really have taken a step back, other than trying to solve the immediate issue in our, in my neighborhood and doing it in a way that actually works. I have really not gone deeper into the policy of this issue because I don't think it's right for politicians to do that if the community itself is so divided.
So I want to thank you for coming down and sharing with us. So.